Good evening and welcome to the special business meeting of April 25th, 2023. I'd like to stand and Mrs. Odell's second grade class is going to lead us in the pledge.
Mrs. Odell, second grade. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It always is nice to start the meeting with students. Mrs. Odell. I'd like to open it up first for public comment on any of the agenda items. Because we don't have any comments, we are going to start with our recognition and I'm going to start with Dr. Love.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening is always very bittersweet for us. First step is we're going to recognize some retirees who represent many, many years of dedicated service to our school district, our students, and our community. So to begin that process, I would like to begin by welcoming up Mr. Matt Mello. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. I have a long way to go, so you don't really need to applaud me right now, but I appreciate that. This is always such a great evening to be a part of, to be able to, especially for me, you know, being in the high school for quite some time. I've worked with all four of these individuals, oh geez, 16, 20, 23 years. So it's nice to be able to be the one up here and kind of like, you know, putting that final statement on their step into life after high school and life after working. So it's really a pleasure. First, I'd like to recognize Marie Jeanette. If you know Marie, if you've been in the high school and you've been in the main office, one of the things that you'll know is that Marie is a fighter. And I mean that in a really good sense. You guys know what I'm talking about, right? But I don't mean that as an adversary. I mean that as somebody that's there to support you. So, you know, I mean, when I started working, you know, first as like IB coordinator and I was going to Marie and we were talking about like getting people to training and all this kind of stuff, she was really an incredible advocate for making sure that the process happened correctly. And if it didn't, you were going to know that there was a process and it's not working correctly and Marie was going to make sure that it did happen that right, that way. So that's what I mean when I talk about Marie being a fighter. So all these years, she's been such like a strong supporter of the staff, you know, in the high school in a different capacity because Marie has worked in the front office as an office assistant and has done an incredible job with that. But it's not just about, you know, what she's doing at a computer or all that kind of stuff. It's again, that like deep drive, passionate support that she has for the people that need to go out there and then work with the students. She's also like a fighter when it comes to the students as well and I admire that, you know, because they come in there into the main office and they've got an urgent issue that needs to be taken care of right away, like they lost their earbuds, right? And it's going to happen now. We got to find those earbuds now. And Marie has always been one like, hey, like there's a lot of things going on right now. You losing your earbuds is not concern number one. And then I'll say, this is the other thing, she's been such a protector of me over the years and to me that's been like really special and important that, you know, I talk about students come in there, sometimes it's parents and they've got to talk to, you know, the assistant principal or the principal, they've got to talk to them right now. And she's always done a great job of, you know, taking down information, deflecting that, but then being able to come to me and have that conversation with me so I can process it. And that's a really important kind of buffer that, you know, buildings need because although everybody's, everybody's like issue is the most important thing right now in the, you know, scope of a building and what's happening during the day, it might not be. And Marie has done such an incredible job vetting that. And it's been so meaningful for me because I feel like, I feel like she's doing it for me, you know? And that's the way I feel or felt as a teacher, that's the way I felt as an assistant principal, and it's definitely the way I feel as a principal. So thank you so much for the years of service that you put in here for the staff and students of Putnam Valley. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to recognize Lori Correa. Lori has worked as a teaching assist, well, teaching assistant for, say, five years, right? Teacher's aide right before that. The one, I think one of the most important things about Lori, if you know her, she is unbelievably professional about what she does in her job. Like, I can't begin to express to everybody how, you know, you have somebody that cares deeply about the students, cares about the staff that she's working with, and doesn't bring in the other kind of stuff that can be brought in to a workplace, right? It's pure professionalism with Lori. My best memories of working with Lori were actually the lunch, when I think it was you, Kurt, myself, and Nancy, and that's where, like Nancy Christopher that was in there. But I think that's where you and I kind of like started to get to know one another at those lunches, just sitting down for lunch. Because Lori and I never worked together in a classroom, but you see the person in the building and like here's the thing, it's like stealth, right? Lori's like in stealth mode. She does her job so well, supporting the students, but she's not the person you're going to see. She's going to be like behind the scenes, making sure the students and the staff have everything they need, but you don't really see and recognize her. She doesn't stand out. But the effect that she has on all these students throughout the years does stand out. You can talk to any of these children that have worked with her and they would tell you that, you know, the time and care she took with them, the way that you talk to students, very respectful, even though some of them can be somewhat disruptive, is really something that should be modeled for and seen by so many other people. So it's this quiet professionalism that really has defined who you are in your career here. And it's, you know, a breath of fresh air to know that and see that. So I've really enjoyed working with Lori over the years. Like I said, I finally got to know her, you know, during, during our lunches together and I miss those days, but I feel like I've been able to have more interactions as an assistant principal and then a principal. Last thing I'll say about Lori is she's like a switchblade knife, right? Like anything that you needed done, and if you know teaching assistants, you know that their schedules are rarely just set in stone at the beginning of the year and this is what they do. There are constantly changes to their schedule. And Lori was like, hey, whatever you need, you know, whatever you need me to do, the ultimate team player with all that, whatever you need me to do, I'll do it. And the other thing that I'll say is she was an advocate as well. We could have conversations when she understood like something might work differently with a child or some other situation might work with how TAs are being used within the building. And I greatly appreciate all of that, your true professionalism and you being a really important member of our team. So congratulations, Lori. I'd like to recognize Eva Wayne. Eva Wayne is a school psychologist and I think on the surface, people think school psychologists, well, okay, students have a bad day, they go and talk with Eva and everything's okay, we move on. I've learned over the course, especially over the last four years, that the school psychologist role involves a lot more. And when you have somebody like Eva, she involves herself a lot more. I'm going to say this, I have learned as much from Eva than I have from anybody else in the last four years as I've been an administrator. She has like been an incredible resource for me and like helping me understand, you know, the 504 process, you know, when students are in trouble, the different avenues and things that can be taken. She is an amazing advocate for the children and, you know, she has a wealth of resources that I had no idea about. And then getting into this role and being able to work with Eva, I mean, it's almost, it's almost every day we have a conversation about one thing or another, but she really did educate me about like families and the family aspect of education and what might be happening at home and then what we can do to support those families. So I'm incredibly grateful for over the last four years for everything you've done to help me be who I am. And it also goes to show you what she has been for everybody else over the course of the last 20 years, a pretty amazing, you know, record of support for our students over that time. And she's an advocate for them, but she's also, when they, you know, she's an advocate and she comes to, you know, administration and she talks about everything that these students need and how we can best support them, but she's also one, when the student comes in there, to help them understand it's just not, they're not there to just complain that there are avenues to resources and support that they need and she's here for that. So I really appreciate all that. I know we all do. You've been an unbelievable supporter of us all and congratulations on your retirement, Eva. And next, I'd like to recognize Karen Cruzy. Karen Cruzy has been at the high school since the high school opened in 2000. She's a special education teacher and she's worked in the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. So there's been a bit of Karen everywhere in the district. And I think that like if you know Karen, you understand how important that is. She's an excellent educator and advocate for students, but she's an incredible coworker. I know Karen and I co-taught a class a long time ago. And then when I became an administrator, I got to work even more closely with Karen because she was doing, you know, working with testing for students. And so you learn a lot about testing schedules and special education testing schedules. And I know Karen takes her work home with her. I think it's crazy, but she goes home with like, you know, files of students and tests. We have AP and IB tests coming up in a couple of weeks and she's like pouring through all this, you know, stuff to make sense of it all and then comes in with the file and it's all set up. But Karen and I, like, you know, it's, I think the relationship is deeper than that. I think we think very, very similarly about a lot of different things when it comes to education and what we're here to do. And I'll say this, Karen, you know, always, always, always reminds you of like, you know, what the child needs and what's best for the child. And I think that at every step of the way, that's what comes out, right? Like, so what are we doing? Okay, we can do this. Well, then that child's going to be stuck with this and this, you know, like constantly looking at that angle and being an incredible advocate, especially for students, you know, special education students with special needs. You know, so, you know, it's, it's a tough day for me, you know, to do that. And I guess, you know, June will be a little bit more difficult because Karen is so passionate about what she does, she's so passionate about this district and the students in it. You know, we're going to miss her dearly and all those, you know, hats that she wears here to support staff and students. But, you know, your true advocacy is shining through. That is your legacy, Karen, how much, you know, you were here to support, you know, students that might not always have the voice that they need. So I greatly appreciate that and I think we all do. Congratulations, Karen.
All right. Next up, I would like to invite up the powerhouse team of Dave Spittle, Michael Koenig.
A powerhouse team. I'll be the warm-up act for this guy. So, yeah, I'm here to recognize two of employees that work with me. Neither one are here, I don't think, unless they just showed up. No, but first, John Boniello has been a cleaner at the district for many years. So a lot of people don't understand quite exactly what cleaners do, but they don't just clean the floors and that, they're roadies. They, cleaners set all this up for you guys tonight, they'll take it down when we leave, set up all the stuff back there and that. So the cleaners will be there at four o'clock in the morning when you guys are waiting for a snow, a snow call, they're there at the, at the campus cleaning up. So, and John has been a dedicated worker for, for the district for a long time. And we're not going to miss him completely because he has come back to sub as a cleaner and he's also answered my pleas that I, every time I get up in front of this microphone, I say, please get, get your CDL, we need bus drivers badly. He's going to re, he's, he's getting recertified as, as a bus driver and he's going to, going to be doing some sub bus driving for us. So say, say hello and thank you next time you see John. The other is Mary Bondi. She was the senior office assistant. She actually left us in December, that's when she retired, so that might be why she's not here, but she's pretty shy, so. I don't know if she'd be here anyway. But anyway, she, and it's not only me, it's facilities directors before me. She, she did the training for me, she taught me how to do the job, she had everything completely organized when I got here and taught me what I needed to do. And so I owe her a great debt of gratitude for all she did to support me in, in learning how to do this job here in Putnam Valley. But also I think that more importantly, as a taxpayer, she's the one who, who really scrutinized every penny that came through this district. So you got to know that if operations are spending money, Mary made sure that that money was, was, was tested against other quotes and she never missed, literally never missed a penny. So taxpayers, you owe Mary Bondi a lot. So anyway, and I do too, so thank you. And Michael's going to talk about the bus drivers because he knows them a lot better than I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you board for giving me an opportunity to speak a little bit about losing four, well, two monitors and two bus drivers and, which is a big hit with a department that's not very, very large. So losing four people in it is a, is a big hit.
Now's an opportunity to insert the sales pitch for replacements. Just in case, you never know, maybe we have some out here, some future bus drivers and monitors. We have some retirees, they'll have extra time.
Yep.
I bet you we can get Karen a CDL. I know you don't want to leave. Keep it towing.
So I'll start, monitor Sandy Wuth, she came about 10 years ago and in that time when she first came, I started her out with a run down county. We have a lot of students that go to, at a district for behavioral issues and they're to be very challenging on the bus and, and she proved herself right away. Sandy would spend, do, talk with the children a lot and would do different types of games with them, even draw with them. And I think throughout that, that interaction and to keep their mind occupied on other things, went from children that a long ride, especially down county, could mean them have an outburst and, and being in trouble to a student that could make that whole ride back and forth to school and with no issues, just keeping their mind occupied with, so she, she proved herself very well with the placement there in, in students with behavioral issues. She then, so she left in, in December, which was a big hit. I think big now she's, she would be, when she came in, she was doing hairdressing and I think now that she went back to hairdressing, Dr. Love, oh, never mind.
I'd like you to know she cut my mother-in-law, my mother-in-law's hair for many, many years. I want you to know.
She'll definitely be missed. Liz Bascarino is another monitor. She also left in December. Liz came to the district, I'm going to say like 20 years ago or more, because when she first came, I was still driving and she was my monitor. I got picked as her to be my monitor and we traveled all over Westchester, Putnam, a lot of miles. And Liz, the students, most of the students that we drove, we dealt with, and even after I went into the office and she carried on, were a lot of students that were non-verbal autistic children and they're very challenging to, they, they don't know how to communicate, so they're having trouble communicating, so they don't have a, so it's hard for them to trust the person that's sitting next to them or talking to or telling them the things to do. But I think what it is with Liz is her, you could pick up that, the vibe of the nurturing, loving, and caring person she is, that I think that those children would relax and they just were wonderful with her, she was wonderful with them. And this went on to, then she started traveling all around Rockland. So over the years, she's got quite a bit of miles on going, going around. But I definitely will be missing Liz. Next one would be Charlie Pataki. He's one of drivers. Charlie came to us and started driving, I think he had got his license just prior to coming to us and fabulous driver, very eager to, to work, always was there if he needed something done, but also was very, would do like a lot of sports trips and things like that, like on the weekend. And not only was it just to drive, but Charlie also enjoyed spending the time watching the team. So he would be out there rooting and cheering for our teams while, while he was at these sporting events. So he was a big fan of the sports here. And Charlie's leaving in September. I think he's, you know, it's a lot over, you, you work so many years and it's, it's a lot to, he retired from the post office, so this is his second retirement. And so he's definitely going to be missed. And I, my fourth person is the driver is Ed Robertson. Ed came about 12 years ago and is a very quiet, but he has a, he's always a happy-go-lucky person, very even, no, even in his worst days, even when you could tell that there's this, whether his day is just very filled with a lot of stuff, I got to move, you know, going for one thing, we have half-days or whatever. He's always just got a smile, always very polite, very calm, cool. I think 12 years, I don't even think I ever heard him raise his voice at all, like very, very just, very calm. And again, another one, which I, I think all, all my drivers are like that and all my monitors are, if, they're always willing to do, go above and beyond to whatever is asked of them. But he, he would always, at the end of every, and he still does, he's, comes in at the end of his routes and will come in, ask if I need something, anything going on that he needs a hand, what I need a hand with or how he can help. Just a very, he's also, the, I think most of the, my employees are going to miss, is he, he, he brings in a lot of like stuff. It's like be, whether appliances, decorations, every time we, every holiday, he's always bringing in decorations to decorate and he's always bringing, but it's all like good stuff. It's like almost going to, down to Chapakua and going on a tag sale, but everything on the table's free. It's like great. So everybody's, when I see him coming across the parking lot, they're like, ooh, what's going to be next? And this stuff is like in boxes and it's never even been opened before. It's like, it's like a tag sale. You don't even need to bring cash. But I think one of the most things I'm going to miss about Ed is every morning, he, early, early morning, he's one of the first drivers in, he would come in my office and we would just talk about, you know, solve all the world's problems. As an old teacher here in my, when I was in middle school, Mr. Kenny would say, solve all the world's greatest mysteries. And he, you know, he, and so I'm going to miss that, I'm going to miss that, that morning talks, the afternoon talks, you know, and stuff like that, but hopefully he'll come and visit. Thank you very much.
So any interested applicants should send their resumes to David Spittle. Okay, I'd like to invite up Mr. Travis McCarty.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, I only have one retiree, which is really nice to see. I'd like to recognize So Gargano. So So's been in the district for 14 years, the first seven of which she spent here in the high school. And I have had the pleasure of working with So for the last seven years at the middle school. And my earliest memories of So was interning over here at the high school with Mr. Oliverio and So being on the radio and Mr. O saying some things over the radio, etiquette-wise kind of borderline, but So, So would definitely give her her thoughts. And she has a larger-than-life personality and if you go to our lunchroom, So is going to tell you what the day has looked like. And she's very honest, very courteous, very caring. She knows every student from grades five all the way through grade eight. She connects tremendously well with our staff and most recently, she's been subbing before her shift and after her shift, always looking for ways to connect with middle schoolers. And if you've ever been in a middle school, sometimes that's rare to find. And we're going to really miss So in her current position because I get a lot of feedback and she, she is outspoken with regards to anything we need and I, I greatly appreciate with regards to anything we need, and I, I greatly appreciate that leadership that she brings to her position. Um, so I know that 14 years have gone by quickly, but she has certainly promised me that this isn't goodbye, this is I will see you again, and coming back as a sub next year, and I promised her that she is needed daily, and, uh, we will certainly be calling her each and every day as much as we can, and, um, our students benefit from her, and our staff does as well, so congratulations, So.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all the retirees. I am the elementary principal, and we have one retiree in the building this year, Mrs. Pat Saffo, teaching assistant. So unfortunately, Pat had a conflict for tonight and couldn't be here, but I don't know if this is her kind of thing anyway. So she came to me mid-winter and said with tears in her eyes, Margaret, I have something to give you, and it was a letter, and it was saying that she would be finishing up at the end of June, and I knew how heartfelt she was feeling, and she just loves her job and loves her students so very much, and cares so deeply about the school. Um, and I said, oh, can I share this with people? And she said, oh, no, please don't. So I think about two months ago, we walked into a faculty meeting, I think it was superintendent's conference day, and the retirees' names had been posted, and she came up to me and she said, you let the cat out of the bag, and I said, the district has to know, Pat. So, um, although she might not want to be front, center stage here, she comes into work every day, center stage with the students that she's assigned to. And when you're a teaching assistant in the elementary school, the job can vary. If you are working in a kindergarten classroom, or then going to teach fourth grade math, or in a self-contained classroom where children are using talkers to communicate, or you're working in the lunchroom with children with allergies, the job is expansive, you just don't know what you're going to do at any point in the day, and there have been changes throughout the years where Pat has worked in the elementary school, and she always gets very attached. So if there's a change for the next year, that's a little hard, because she's fallen in love with all of the teachers in the classroom and the students she's working with so closely, and that's the beauty of the work that she does. So I do want to congratulate Pat on an amazing career at Putnam Valley. Also, she has a beautiful family that she's always celebrating, and all the achievements of her children, and I just want to say that she's a wonderful woman and will miss her dearly. Thank you.
So as we transition from our retirees to our tenure recipients, I want to note, right, as we, as we thank those moving on for their many years of service, we also take this opportunity to welcome, uh, some of our newer teachers, uh, who will be the teachers retiring from here, and I did some quick math, in only 26 to 36 short years from now. You could hear, depending upon age and tier and all those other things, you could hear all these nice words spoken about you.
2016.
2016. We, we, 2058 for one person out there we spoke about before the meeting. Um, but I'm sure the time will fly. Sounds really far away, but I'm sure the time will fly, uh, and you'll have your opportunity as well. Uh, speaking of some of the retirees, you get to enjoy all the life's, um, ups and, uh, ups and downs, uh, the teaching of your current students' kids seemed to be a very popular one, so you guys get to look forward to that coming around when you start teaching your students' kids, um, at some point before you retire. But each of our tenure recipients obviously emerged as a top candidate through a very thorough, a thorough interview process. In some cases, hundreds of candidates applying for a single position, and these candidates were selected amongst the best of the best and truly represent that here in Putnam Valley. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, obviously, all the mid-year and end-year meetings with your principals, all the formal and unannounced observations, um, but one piece really stood out for me, and with this cohort, many of which started, uh, the same year I started as superintendent, one very interesting thing happened their first year of employment, many of which were appointed in the 1920 school year, were then sent home in the spring of 2020. And I can't imagine being a first-year teacher and all of a sudden being said, sent home, and asked to teach online, uh, then followed by some version of hybrid instruction, uh, teaching six feet apart, uh, don't breathe on the kids, don't talk to the kids, don't, um, don't let the kids talk to each other. It, it was the craziest time in the modern history of education, and many of these individuals were in their first-year teaching, figuring out how to change everything that they've learned through their pre-service programs, and figuring out a way to connect with students, um, during, during crazy times during COVID. So I give them a huge compliment and round of applause for being able to persevere through that process, and obviously, our students have greatly benefited from it. I do also want to recognize several of our tenure recipients here this evening are actually getting their second tenure, and I'm greatly appreciative for those individuals who are willing to take on new challenges despite already having tenure in another area. Uh, we're a small school district, which means, um, many people have to wear many different hats, and I truly recognize, um, the service that Brad Grogan, Paul Pearson, and Georgia Levarnway have played here in Putnam Valley in taking on new challenges and doing what needs to be done to, uh, service the students here in Putnam Valley. So that's my quick little spiel on our teachers. Uh, we have one teacher getting tenure in two different areas at the same time, which is also pretty impressive. And then for our teaching assistants, again, our teaching assistants are truly the glue that holds our buildings together, they are often moved between buildings where they best can service students, sometimes based upon relationships with students, uh, needs, talent sets, and we have four teaching assistants here this evening who will be recommended for tenure, and I do want to recognize the tremendous service they provide to our community, our students, and our school, and truly what, what keeps us all afloat here. Uh, so very valuable service, many of them have changed buildings, uh, over the past few years, and again, always willing to do whatever is necessary to meet the needs of our students. So, uh, I know they're each gonna be called individually for, uh, the resolution, but I did want to give just a little background information on the tenure process as well as, uh, the individuals, so what they've had to persevere through. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, um, we're going to new business. I, um, number one, please, Mr. Farrow.
Resolved on the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, that Bradley Grogan be granted tenure in the area of social studies at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Chris.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that, uh, let's see, I want to make sure I'm on the right one here. Yes, that Jonathan Hogan be granted tenure in the area of the ESOL at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Chris. This is my exercise, my new exercise.
This is a state of union address.
Number three, please, Ellen.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that John McManus be granted tenure in the area of science at the Putnam Valley School District effective September 1st of 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Chris. Nobody told them they're supposed to, like, give a speech or anything? Okay. Um, number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Kendall Rose Coleman be granted tenure in the area of guidance at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Chris. How old were you when you first made your first visit to Putnam Valley?
Can't answer that question.
No, no, just her first visit, what was she, maybe a year? No, I think. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Pearl Pierce, Paul Pearson be granted tenure in the area of special education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Paul. Jeannie, are you getting pictures of all these people standing up? We should just make them stand up by themselves so that we can see them, but let's see, what are we on, seven?
Six, I think.
Six, sorry.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Georgia Levarnway be granted tenure in the area of elementary at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Georgia. Yay is a perfectly appropriate response to that.
You gonna go back for a third or fourth? Get any, anything else up your sleeve? ESL, no? What work on?
Uh, number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Deborah Verdi be granted tenure in the area of elementary effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Deborah. I think this is Deborah's third tenure, right? Third? Uh, number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Daniella Mary be granted tenure in the area of special education and elementary at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 22nd, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Daniella.
Resolved the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Maxine Warden be granted tenure as a teaching assistant at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Maxine. You're losing track.
Ten.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Elizabeth Tron be granted tenure as a teaching assistant at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Liz.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Andrew Silastrie be granted tenure as a teaching assistant at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st of 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Andrew. And number 12, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Jennifer Cahill-Jonas be granted tenure as a teaching assistant at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective October 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Congratulations, Jennifer. Uh, Mrs. Tenhyke, are you want all the tenure, the, the, uh, tenure candidates in a picture?
I would love it if you could make them do it.
Could all the tenure candidates come up and stand here, please? Come on. Um, we'll move.
No, it's okay. They're gonna stick up off you.
Okay, good. Come on, more, more.
I'm gonna change your role out.
Do we have everybody?
Simone, would you like us to pause and let everyone leave before your student report? Or you want to just go right into it?
Let her do it.
We can do whatever you'd like.
No, we'd like to hear you. Go ahead, we'll let you do your student.
We'll let everyone leave after the student report.
We'll dismiss you in a minute.
Go ahead, Simone.
Um, okay, so first off, I'd like to say congratulations to the tenured staff, congratulations. Um, we have our spring musical, Something Rotten, on April 28th and 29th at 7:00 PM, so please be sure to come out and support our students, and we also have a show April 30th, which is Sunday, at 2:00 PM. Uh, the class of 2023 senior Eva DeChant has been named both New York State and Putnam and Westchester County Girls Basketball Player of the Year, and this is just one of her many accomplishments, she has been four times All-Section Basketball Player, 2023 Miss Basketball, and she has a record, our school record, for the most points, for career points as well as single game points, so I'd like to say congratulations to her, that's a big We have our seniors gearing up for a final, I'd say 28 days of classes left, so that's, trust me, I'm counting. Uh, we have lots of senior activities coming up, between finalizing tickets for prom and just gearing up for senior week and graduation, um, lots of fun stuff in terms of sports as well. Um, on a different type of note, uh, I wanted to discuss, or just mention mainly, something that has been kind of resting on some of the students' minds, and I will start by discussing the district vision that we have for our district, and it says, our vision, the child first and foremost, building a foundation for the future. First and Foremost Building a Foundation for the Future." And so I will say, specifically, me as a student, I have received not, and humbly I'll say this, not one but two full tuition scholarships over the last year of my applications and things like that, and I definitely highly attribute that to my involvement in, for example, my science research program, and we were recently notified that our teacher would not be with us next year, or at least the underclassmen would not have that teacher as a educator any longer, and I'm not necessarily privy to all the information regarding more serious topics like contracts and things like that, but based upon my involvement here as a student representative on the Board of Education, as well as just my community involvement within my school and things like that, it seems that there is some, there are some issues with the contract, and unfortunately, I feel like now it's affecting students as well, because those students, and I'll say this directly with science research, those students no longer have an, an icon, a mentor, a, somebody that really stands up for them in so many areas of their lives, and I'm grateful that I had my senior year with my teacher, my teacher that wrote my letter of recommendation for my college applications and many other programs, and even the scholarship that I'm on right now about to go to school. And I will say this is a significant loss to the district, specifically just because this teacher is such a, this is very difficult for me, they're a really upstanding faculty member, and I feel like they just represent the district vision very well, and I just wanna, I just hope that the faculty and the teacher contract continues to be a priority in terms of negotiation and just figuring that area out, just because I don't want it to become a trend in the future, no matter how long this negotiation goes, that teachers don't feel that they're supported and they have to leave the district, and they don't feel like they can stay here because of that, and that will impact our students and that foundation that we mentioned in the district vision, it won't be built, because we don't have feel, there, there is feelings that faculty and teachers that mean so much to students aren't being supported, and I just want to say that, and I hope that for both sides, I hope for teachers as well as administration, that at some point there can be a middle ground met so that our students aren't being affected, and I just know that is a concern, and I'm hearing a lot more buzz around the school about this contract, and as much as it pains me to hear that these are conversations that students are being, having across the high school, it makes me realize like this is a big issue, and it really doesn't just affect the staff or just the administration, but it's expanding and it's affecting our students, because I left a room today with multiple students crying because they lost a mentor, they lost a very trusted faculty member that they felt was very supportive of them, and I must say, I've never had, like, I've had very few teachers and faculty members that care as much as this one does, and that's all I will say, because I can't do this, but um, yeah, I just hope that we can reach an agreement soon, because this was a very hard loss for the district, and I hope this can be resolved quickly, and I would love to be a support, and students would love to be a support in any way they can, or just, and, yes, that's my student report.
We really appreciate your thoughts, and I, I will say, for all three of the student board members this year, you've given us so much of yourself and, and your thoughts and ideas on subjects that we're discussing, that it's such a valuable thing, I hope that you're picking successors and mentors to continue that into next year, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having me this year.
So, I was gonna echo those thoughts, first of all, thank you, I think it was very well said, it's very brave for you to come up at a public meeting and to say that, in fact, I'm glad your student report came while everyone was still here, because it's a very powerful message. I'll do my best to answer it, certainly regarding the individual who you spoke about, I can't speak to the intentions of why, but I certainly can speak to the profound impact that individuals had on this district, what a tremendous loss it is to us, students work multiple years side by side with him, and obviously we'll do our very best to replace the position, and then the program will certainly continue to move forward, but it's tremendous shoes and a tremendous loss to the district. Regarding the contract settlement, tomorrow is not soon enough, I agree with you wholeheartedly, it needs to get done as soon as absolutely possible, we're lucky to be surrounded by fantastic educators who care as deeply as, as the one you spoke about tonight does, right, to the point where that relationship is so valuable, it's bringing students to tears, and I hope we don't lose another single one of them, so tomorrow isn't soon enough to get it done, it's my, my hope that we continue to meet and to find a fair compromise that at the end doesn't end up hurting students, and as you outlined, in this case, it is certainly a huge loss to the students of Putnam Valley to be losing that teacher, so thank you very much for, for speaking about that, and again, I, I hope it gets done as soon, as soon as humanly possible. Thank you. So while we want you all to stay for the board meeting, if you have dinner reservations or somewhere better to be, now would be a good opportunity to transition. If you wanna stay, we're gonna talk about the BOSI's board elections, our school budget vote, everybody's leaving, no? Consent agenda items, no?
Important thing.
Hi, thank you very much. But still an audience.
It used to be me, so I, I appreciate that. So, the first presentation is the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's vote?
One second, we skipped superintendent's update.
Most my update was really just talking about the tenure recipients, I can, I could actually jump in for the few, Simone had covered most of them, I was gonna talk about, well, this one we don't think we covered, NAM, Name Putnam Valley One of the Best Communities for Music Education, again, I don't remember how many years, but if, every year, it's a distinction that we get, so certainly kudos to our music education teachers, beginning in the elementary school, all the way through the high school, that's a tremendous accomplishment and something that Putnam Valley continues to be very proud of, we had spoken about Something Rotten, the High School Musical.
Matt Mello, can you please take your conversation outside? Thank you.
So the Best Communities for Music Education, the High School Musical is coming up Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this week, and I did wanna talk a little bit about the PTA budget meeting, so the PTA board had invited Jill and myself in to give, not necessarily a presentation, but they had collected answer, questions that we answered, it was well attended, many of our teachers showed up, it was nice to see them there, and it was really an opportunity to make sure that the public has accurate information and is informed to cast an educated vote when the, when the budget comes around on May 16th, so those were my three quick updates this evening, it was really about our retirees and our, and our tenure candidates, our tenure recipients, so I didn't really wanna take away from that. Thank you.
Okay, so, the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's vote really has two parts, one is the three candidates for open seats on the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's Board of Education, Richard Kreps, Mary Kay Nielsen, and Jennifer Rosen, Mr. Kreps and Ms. Nielsen are both from Putnam County, which is kinda nice, because in the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's, there's often a lot of Northern Westchester and not a lot of Putnam, so it's kinda nice that we've got now, I think, three from Putnam on their board, if these three are elected, so, three candidates. The other part is the, their administrative budget, just so that you know, the administrative budget is going to include, does include, career and technical education, a fairly large amount, which was left off of their original budget, so you'll see later on that we are going to amend our contract with, of services with BOSI's to reflect this new amount. Any other questions about the candidates, or?
So there's three openings and three positions.
People running, right. Okay, so that will be later on in the agenda, we will approve of that, we'll approve that. Okay, the second presentation is the proposed budget Q and A, I don't know if Dr. Luft, you or Ms. Fugarello wanna?
Yeah, I think, obviously, we weren't looking to give the same presentation for a fourth time, our original intention was to adopt the budget last meeting, the addition of a school resource officer held it off to provide more time for public comment, it was a topic of conversation at the PTA meeting, which was very useful, but I think now is our opportunity to adopt the budget that was previously proposed. I guess just some other quick highlights, obviously, the, the biggest piece of this budget is we're able to preserve our staffing and our programs, which directly benefits our students, which is a huge piece, and unfortunately, a conversation, some budget cycles, we are, we are forced to seek reductions in areas, so we're happy to report that's not the case this year, in fact, we're looking to add a couple of positions, an E and L teacher, a library clerk, and obviously, a school resource officer, this budget also continues, those teachers that were brought in and teaching assistants that were brought in as we go into the last year of our grant funds related to COVID, so we still have teachers to help reduce class size, we have teaching assistants to help alleviate some of the stresses within the classroom, and we're looking to bring on a few new staff members within this budget, in its entirety, the budget represents a 2.4, 5% increase in the tax levy, I don't wanna quote any other numbers incorrectly, but that's the biggest number associated with it, and I think my final plea for the community is to become informed, if you have a question, reach out to someone in the school district to get an accurate answer, I promise you, Facebook is not the source of accurate information, so I would not believe what you read on social media, and I would encourage you to reach out to anyone who has the information, the correct information, myself included, I would happy to answer the phone call and to provide any information or answer any questions any community member has about our proposed budget, and encourage individuals to come out, again, this is the most significant investment this community makes every year, the school district is obviously the largest employer within the school community, and there's a tremendous amount at stake when we look at the future of our children's education, and those decisions are typically based on a very, very small subset of our community who comes out and casts a ballot, so I encourage everyone to become informed, everyone to exercise the demographic right, the democratic right to come out and cast a ballot on March 16th, on May 16th, sorry. Anything to add, Jill?
Well, you pretty much covered it, I just wanna say that the newsletter will be coming out next week, it is completed, I have a little miniature version of it here tonight, but we're not handing them out yet, and I have some for the board, I will share with everybody, so it was completed today and went to print today. Again, just repeating what Dr. Luft said, that we are hopeful that what we've been putting out to the community is something that makes sense to everyone and understands the, the importance of coming out and expressing their, you know, their wishes while we're going through the budget cycle, and I hope that we've been able to address the questions that have been posed to us, and that people understand the answers to those questions, and if they don't, that they need to come to us and get the correct answers, we've been hearing a lot of things that, you know, are definitely not in line with what our intentions were in the budget, and I, and I'm hoping that we cleared a lot of that up at the PTA meeting especially, I think it was very successful. So, again, the vote is on May 16th, there are absentee ballots available starting next week, and, you know, they can be returned to us on the day of the vote by 5:00 PM, and the vote is being held at its usual place and time, the Putnam Valley Elementary School, between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and we hope to see as many people out there voting as we can, because the students and the staff and the district, you know, would like to see you come and, and voice your opinion and give support. And that's about it, that's all I have, unless anybody has any other questions regarding items in the budget before we close it up.
So the reason, one of the reasons why we've delayed our adoption is the, is the addition of a resource officer, but additionally, we had changes, because we learned about our bids with preschool, pre-kindergarten, that we're not gonna be able to fit into the budget because of the math, the formula that the state was giving us was not gonna allow us to offer that program, so we changed the budgets there, so that then turns into a reduction of the budget increase that would have been, correct, based on the finance?
Right, so the original proposed budget was lowered by the original, was lowered by the pre-K state aid amount, which is the only amount that was appropriated in the, in the budget as well, so that was $410,000. The addition of the SRO increased the budget by $90,000. Again, state aid, I failed to mention that, the state aid still isn't finalized, that is something, in addition to a lot of the other items in the budget, which we take the best guess we can on and propose the, the budget in a way that, you know, we think makes the most sense, and has, you know, been well thought out and well, I wanna say, has a contribution from every department in the, in the district to its development during the process, and, and everybody puts in what they feel is necessary, and we, as an administrative team, decide what those things should be, and that, what are necessary for our students to be successful and the, and the district to thrive the way that it has been and the way that we'd like to see it thrive going forward.
So I'm, for clarity's sake, I'm hearing a thread throughout the community about two things that are diametrically opposed to each other, that the, the teachers aren't having a fair contract, that we need to be fair with the teachers, which is the goal that we're doing, but the implication being that people are gonna vote down the budget, but support the teachers, and those two things don't work together, they are completely at odds with each other, that if a budget goes down, not that we can't, we can't make it, have an agreement on this contract, but that to vote down a budget just starts the, the dollars at a, at a lower level for future years, and necessarily jeopardizes a contract, but to try to think that voting down the budget is some sort of message to support the teachers, those two things just don't work together, and, so that's a thread that's out there, and if you, that's, if you have questions about that, you can bring that to, to any of the board members, we have, all our emails are available out there, you can call the district office, but the idea that somehow those two things can work together, just, it's, it's, it's not something that can be done, I wanna make sure that that's, that's out there.
Yeah, along those same lines, I would... Yeah, along those same lines, I would guess that a conversation with any union leader or teacher leader would warrant the same exact answer. I think obviously they're very well educated. They understand the process. You're totally right. If a budget gets voted down, that's less money for the board to use at their discretion, hence less money that is available to be utilized to settle contracts or to do raises or anything else of the sorts, right? It's also less money to support student programs. It's less money for extracurricular activities. It's less money to support staff. So there is, you're completely right. It's dichotomically opposed to each other for, to try to benefit teachers by voting down the budget. That those two things do not mesh together in any way. And if you don't want to take our word for it, I would encourage anyone who has a relationship with the teacher leader to reach out to them and ask them their opinion regarding that same situation.
Because for a deeper dive, it actually don't necessarily impact the contract, but you might lessen the number of features we actually might have. This contract will probably move on, but only for the teachers that remain. But if we need to cut hundreds of thousands of dollars for the budget, that's not going to be a contract issue. More so than it's going to be the handful of teachers that will have a negative impact.
Right.
And it's not a threat, it's just, you know.
Jill, correct me if I'm wrong. If this budget goes down, the district will be in a hole for approximately $900,000.
Right, so I was going to give that number. So contingent budget means cutting the budget $961,000. $65,000, $965,000. So all of the items that you just mentioned, whether it's staffing, supplies, you know, facilities, maintenance, whatever it is. But I mean, it's definitely gonna, if, if people are under the impression or voters or taxpayers are under the impression that cutting the budget just means cutting material things.
No.
That's not the way it's going to go down.
We don't have $900,000 worth of paper clips in the district.
Right, so it's not, you know, and I've heard the message like, you know, don't, don't put that out there as if it sounds like a threat. And really, it's not, it's not a threat. It's the reality of what will happen
Yep.
if, if that were to take place. And it's, it's not, it's not a small amount of money. It's not something we can easily solve by cutting a few things here and there and looking throughout the budget. Look at everything in the budget as an estimate, and I've heard that comment as well. How can you budget for teachers' salaries that you don't know? Well, I have news for them. The CSEA and the teacher's contract is both expired. You know, the teacher's contract has expired. The CSA will expire if we don't settle before the end of the year. We don't know what state aid is. We, you know, we guess on a lot of items that are throughout the entire budget. So those, you know, that's my job. That's our job. It's the board's job. It's all of us together putting something together that makes sense, that's affordable for our community. And until we, you know, get the cooperation of the, the community to come out and vote, people to sit down and negotiate in a fair manner and on both sides of it, you know, that's, that's where, I still have to say the same thing over and over again, that it's not the budget and, like you said, the budget and the teacher's contract or the CSEA contract they have to work together in order to work. Because if they don't, if they don't come together at some point, none of those things, you start from zero again and you, and you try to build something. And it takes years to recover from things like that. We're not just going to lose it in the current year coming up.
Yeah, the impact next year is going to be worse.
It multiplies times two every year.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the scary part.
So, and, sorry. And does, we need to reaffirm the fact that at least 75% of our budget is salary
That's right.
and benefits.
Salary and benefits for all employees.
Right.
So if there's no other questions from the board, if you would like, I have a copy of the questions that were provided to us from the PTA, which, many of which I thought were very beneficial. So we can quickly run through some of those questions and the answers in hopes of providing accurate information to the community. I'll just, I'll skip the ones that are not necessarily budget-related because you always get a question about like chicken nuggets or something. But, so the first question was, does the proposed budget have the teacher, new teacher's contract factored in? So they said a conversation about, state law prohibits teachers from striking and it prohibits them from working without a contract. So our teachers, while deserving of a new contract and in need of a new contract, are still operating under the terms of their old contract. So that old contract obviously includes protections regarding salary and teachers still receive steps. So every teacher who's not already on the top step moves up in terms of salary between 1.5 and 5% or those steps that are built in. So the teachers are never without a contract. Teachers are, we're not asking them to come in and teach for free. They have the same protections that are in their contract. They still receive steps that are in the contract. And the reason why I'm saying that is because teachers are still receiving steps and we certainly expect to have a negotiated contract as soon as possible. The district is obligated to budget money next year to pay the teachers for the contract we certainly hope is settled this school year. So I don't know where that information started from, but there is definitely money in the budget for teacher's contract next year. We know they're getting steps. We're projecting a percentage increase on top of it. So that, that is totally there. It would be very poor budgeting for Jill and I to propose a budget that did not include contractual obligations in terms of salary raises for teachers in it. So that answer is yes. There's a question about COVID money, what has been allocated for. There's tons of things that's been allocated for. We've spoken about this at the board table several times. It includes everything from health and safety of our buildings, cleaning materials, overtime, and positions, right? We fund a nursing position, three teaching assistants, two teachers. We've done some outdoor learning spaces. There's our summer programs or boost programs or reading programs, our parent engagement evenings, our professional development work related to middle years program. So there's a lot of stuff out there. And if anyone wants a more thorough list, those are just some of the things off the top of my head as to what that COVID money is being used for. This question about the middle years program, what does it cost to implement? So the fee, the annual fee we pay for IB to be candidacy school is just over $10,000. Really, the only other cost for us at this time is just the training of staff. And obviously, that number varies. Jill had done a complete analysis for the middle years program and the diploma program. And the net cost to the district, we spend more upfront, but we get money back in terms of testing for students at the high school level that pay for testing. So the net between those two programs was about $35,000 a year? If we take the testing money back?
Yeah, maybe slightly higher, but it's averaged out over the seven. We've, we've actually been seven years into IB. So it was interesting to go back and research all of that myself, actually. So yeah, we may lay out $60,000 to $70,000 a year, but we get back in revenue for the testing because we allow each student to have, we pay for one test for every student and then they, range from anywhere from two to five tests, which we have to lay the money out for. So you might see that expenditure in the, in the budget. I don't want to say, you know, it's 35 because you'll see a higher number, but we do get it back and we have to record it as revenue. So that's, that's where he's getting the 35 to 40,000.
So I believe there's a lot of misinformation out in the community. We want to save $966,000 if we can just cancel the IB program. As you'll see, it's nowhere, the cost is nowhere near that amount. So eliminating that program after all the work that has gone into implementing it over the last seven years, the commitment of our teachers, our administrators, and our students would certainly be a travesty to this district, who is now known for its academic rigor and instructional programs that are available to the students through IB. Then there was a question regarding the superintendent's contract. I let Jill answer this one? No, I'm joking. So I think we covered this last board meeting, but I'm certainly happy to explain again. It was my request to the Board of Education many months ago to open my contract to remove the free healthcare and retirement from my contract. It's no secret that this has been a priority of the board for over a year now. And it was disingenuous or felt disingenuous for me to be working with bargaining units to negotiate away lifetime benefits for free if I still had that in my contract as well, although I'm obviously not very close to retiring. So that's what the reason for opening my contract was, was to decrease the amount of benefits I receive in retirement, not the scope of the healthcare, but the contribution in which the district provides. So my new contract now specifies that I will pay 20% of my health insurance premium in retirement based upon the cost of that health insurance plan in the school year. So that was the reason for opening the superintendent's contract. In terms of salary, I had three years left in my previous contract. Those three years have remained exactly the same. I'm not getting a dollar more for those three years. And then the final two years of the contract are raises that are to be determined by a Board of Education at a future date. So I have not taken any more money. I have decreased my benefits. And that is the reason why the board agreed to open up my contract and settled my contract so quickly because I was gaining nothing from it and I was losing benefits while the district was gaining benefits from it. So I'm sure the board would quickly approve any contract before then that offers those conditions. But that is really the reason why my contract was done. It has nothing to do with the teacher's contract and trying to get that done as well. So those, those two things do not intersect. We had a question about pre-K. I think we've covered that. The issue is issued in RFP for pre-K in hopes of partnering with a community-based organization. The reality is, is community organizations in this part of the state cannot operate based upon the per pupil expenditure that the state is willing to provide. And Barbara and myself have been lobbying hard for the state to change. I think someone's here.
You're afraid to come in.
Did we win? We won. All right, we won.
Yay.
Need to let another cross team back in the building, but we won. So unfortunately, while the state earmarks money for pre-K in Putnam Valley, the reality is, is there's a lot of rules attached to that. The first being a per pupil expenditure of $5,400 for anyone who pays for pre-K or daycare services in this area is fully aware of the fact $5,400 is a far cry from what it actually costs to send a student to those programs. So we're hopeful the state will make changes and allow us to service those students in Putnam Valley with state subsidized pre-K services. There's a question about field trips at the elementary school. I think the answer was actually very interesting. It's not a matter of district approval, but it's a matter of the cost of these trips have risen significantly. And there's a hesitancy to pass those expenditures on to parents. Obviously, the district can't sort of cover expenses for individual groups of kids. It's not something we typically do in terms of field trips, although whenever we can, we provide transportation using our own transportation services and drivers. But there was conversations about grants and other ways. I am fully in support of elementary school students going on field trips. And we just have to find a way to make that possible without passing on those expenditures directly to parents. There's a question about the size of the district office. And I think Jill and I spoke a lot about, we're certainly willing to compare the size of our district office to any other district office in any other school district of equal size. We're very proud of what we do. We think we are appropriately staffed. And I'm not sure who wrote the question, but I certainly would welcome a further conversation with them if they have concerns. There was a question about raises for administrators, for, in the contract for administrators. So our administrative contract covers our assistant principals, our principals, our athletic director. And their contract has no steps. So they get, their percentage raise in their current contract is 1.75%. That's it. They don't get a step plus 1.75%. So we answered that question. There was a question about class size. We had spoken about maintaining the two teachers that are currently being funded by grants. There was a question as to what the district will do when that, when those grants ran out. And I said that's a conversation for the board to discuss next budget cycle, which Jill reminded me will start in July. No, no rest. Okay, and then there was again another question about the superintendent's contract and teachers, what happens to salary? I'm not really sure where the question is. Obviously, my contract's negotiated with the board, just like anybody else's is. Oh, there was a question about who negotiates the teacher's contract. Somehow it got out there that I am solely responsible for negotiating the teacher's contract. Again, I'm not really sure where this information comes from. Just so everyone is clear, part of those processes, part of that process of collective bargaining, Jackie's in on it, Natalie's in on it, Jill's in on it, and myself. So we have four members of the district office, as well as the district's school attorney is present at all those meetings. As of late, a mediator has also been present. So wherever the notion started of that this is a contract that I am solely negotiating is entirely inaccurate. We have a negotiation team, just like the teachers do. And those teams meet, both have, they have a labor relations specialist, we have an attorney. And then again, recently, it's a state-appointed mediator that has been trying to work with both sides. So in no way is this me negotiating it. There was also a question about my failure to be able to negotiate any contracts, which again, I found interested. The teacher's current contract was negotiated by me. So if you look at the front page, I have signatures on there. So we had an extremely beneficial negotiation with the teachers. Last time around, we made tremendous changes to their contract. I think we played, we changed 50-something clauses of their contract. We updated stuff that hadn't been updated in 50, 60 years. So it was a huge accomplishment. It was a tremendous collaboration between the district and the teachers to get all of that done. And that was certainly done with, with me being the superintendent. We've also successfully negotiated an administrative contract, a CSEA contract. We have another CSEA contract that's very close to reaching the ratification phase. And I certainly hope that the teacher's contract will be settled in the very near future. Nobody wants it done more than myself. I am willing to meet morning, afternoon, evening, overnights, on weekends. I will do whatever is possible to reach a settlement that's fair for our students, fair for our teachers, and fair for our community so that this entire district can begin to move on and recover from what, what is currently happening here. So back to Simone's point, nobody wants it done more than me. Tomorrow is already too late. And I welcome any feedback or partnership with the teachers to get in a room and get this done as soon as possible.
It's also not done in a vacuum. You know, you're working with the board as well as, you know, setting up some of the initial parameters and goals for the district and for the community. So, you know, it's not as though even just your, your admin team is the only, and the attorneys and the mediator are the only people at the table. Even though we're not physically at the negotiating table, we are in, in those conversations. We'll have another conversation in executive session about collective bargaining this evening. So it's not as though it's all up to the team, the community by proxy is involved in that as well.
Right, I guess that's a good point for individuals who may not be aware of the process. Their public school districts inherently have a system of checks and balances in place where the superintendent must present the budget to the Board of Education for their consideration. But I, by myself, cannot approve a contract. Nor can the superintendent be bypassed and the resolution go directly to the Board of Education. The Board of Education cannot approve a contract without the superintendent. So that checks and balances is built into the system and rightfully so. We're obviously in constant communication. We review every, after every meeting, every mediation session, every proposal that's exchanged. We have detailed conversations regarding what the board believes. We set our priorities in the very beginning. I don't think it's any secret at this point. Retiree healthcare contribution remains sort of the holdup at this point. It's something that we continue to hopefully work towards. It's, it's an important piece for the district to maintain its fiscal solvency. And it's something that almost every other district in our region has, has already given away. There I know of one other district out of the 62 in our region that still has free retiree health costs. And it's, I mean, it's of the utmost importance to us to get this contract settled and done as soon as possible so we can get back to focusing on, to Simone's. contract settled and done as soon as possible, so we can get back to focusing on, to Simone's point, focusing on keeping our students first and foremost.
And we will have a public hearing, the final hearing, which will be probably very similar to this in a week? Is it next week?
Next Tuesday, May 2nd.
Stay tuned, we'll see it again.
All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda.
Resolved the recommendation superintendent schools to approve consent agenda items two through four as follows.
Two through six or two through four?
Six.
Two through, two through six. Second.
It includes tonight appointing the school psychologist as CSC CPS care person when needed, approval of the amended 2324 contract of services to begin WBOCs due to error on the original document they provided to us, approval and agreement with the lower Hudson Regional Information Center for multi-function devices for a multiple-year term, approval of unpaid dates for two staff members, and approval of additional hours for various staff members.
Any other questions or comments? I would just like to point out that both BOCs and the RIC are ways that we work to control costs and serve our taxpayers by joining with other districts and other schools in the area to get the lowest possible prices for whatever it is that we're buying or services. So those are just examples of, you know, the kind of diligence that we do in order to keep costs down.
It'd be far more expensive for us to do it on our own, or we wouldn't be able to do, for a lot of the students provide the services at all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda is accepted. New business, going back to new business, new business two.
No? Oh, yes, sorry.
Number one.
Resolved by the Putnam Valley, sorry, resolved by the Putnam Valley Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget for the 2023-24 school year, the amount of $58,145,135. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District approve a property tax report card for the 2023-24 school year referenced in the minutes of this meeting as document 176/23, and authorize the district treasurer to submit it to the State Education Department.
Questions or comments?
Okay, the property tax report card, if anybody wants to know what that is. So that steps you through the tax cap. It's got a calculation in it that shows you last year's tax cap, this year's tax cap. It's a form that is provided by the State Education Department to be filled out and returned to them, and it also gives a forward look to, or a look at what our fund balance was on June 30th, and then a forward look at what we think it's going to be this June 30th. So it's just a form that has to be filled out, attached to the budget. It will be attached, an attachment on the long form of the budget, and it'll be available on our website as well, if anyone would like to take a look at that. And it's done every year. It's not anything new.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved to cast one vote for each of the three candidates for three vacancies on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Putnam, Northern Westchester Counties whose names are marked with an X on the ballot attached to document 178 over 23 to the official minutes of this meeting, each term running from July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2026. Richard Kreps, Mary Kay Nielsen, and Jennifer Rosen.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Mrs. Blino, you have that form? You'll send it in? Number four, please.
Whereas the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Putnam, Northern Westchester County thereafter BOCs has proposed its tentative administrative budget for the 2023-2024 school year, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, now therefore be it resolved that the BOCs tentative administrative budget for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $10,999,870 be and hereby is approved by the Board.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent's schools to appoint Abigail Calora to a seven-week long-term, seven-week long-term substitute as a fifth-grade ELA and social studies teacher at the middle school effective May 5th, 2023 through June 23rd, 2023, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education at the substitute salary rate of $150 per day. Ms. Calora holds childhood education grades one through six, and students with disabilities grade one through six certifications. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. So we've had our student reports. Do you have anything else, Simone? And the superintendent's report we've had? You're good?
Good. That's the public's point.
So now the public is invited to comment on any topic. Presentation topics for upcoming meetings.
So our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 2nd, and that'll be our final budget hearing and board meeting.
Okay. Board member comments?
I would just like to say, I had the pleasure of working with every single retiree during my tenure here in district, and these individuals are going to be greatly missed. They persevered and dealt with so many different things, and COVID being at the top of that. And I agree with you, Dr. Love, there's never been a more disruptive type of occasion than that COVID was to education. I absolutely agree with that, and God bless these people who persevered and held true to their calling. Each and every one of those retirees will be missed. They are great people, and I know from a personal angle that I will miss their presence here in these halls.
Yeah. Anything else? I will say that I, in looking at the calendar, I know that I got the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Annual Meeting Notice, which is May 22nd. It's going to be on Zoom. So at the next board meeting, or the following one, anyway, before the 22nd, we have to approve of West Putt's budget and their new board members. So that will be on the agenda. There's also a conflict, the boards' night out, which is, you know, they invite the superintendent, the members of the board, any of the administrative staff. I forget where they're going this year, somewhere, I don't know. But it's also the night of senior awards, so I can't go. So if any board member wants to go, you know, I'll pass along the information, and you're more than welcome to go. Last year it was, I think, at the Kittle House, but it's not, it's someplace else this year. So, anyway.
Just one thing, on the agenda item details, the listing of what's to come?
That's last year's information. That's just your eyes. That's not anything public domain.
Well, you have May 19th is the next business meeting, that's a Friday, and June 2nd?
These dates are not right.
They're okay.
This is 2022.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? So I'd like to have a motion to move into executive session for two matters of the employment history of two particular persons, and one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, known as the Taylor Law.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
There will be no business conducted afterward.